I would like to call the January 12, 2022 city council meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chilton.
Present.
Councilmember Parker.
Present.
Hutchings.
Present.
Ruffridge.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Carey.
Here.
Student Representative Knowles.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings? Thank you.
One second.
You have a second?
One second.
Mr. Chilton, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to add lay down resolution 2022-002 amending the authorized uses for COVID-19 community funding from the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services grant to include temporary emergency leave for city employees to the regular agenda as agenda item 8B2.
Mr. Ruffridge? I have a note here that you will state a possible conflict with resolution, with that resolution?
Thought I would declare that when we get to the resolution, but yes, I can declare an objection to adding the lay down item because I have a possible conflict with lay down resolution 2022-002. I'm the principal, one of the principal owners of Inlet Pharmacy Group that does business at Saldana Professional Pharmacy, currently receiving allocated grant funds through a subrecipient agreement. Thank you.
Okay, a conflict does exist and Councilmember Ruffridge will abstain from discussion and voting on resolution 2022-002. Can I have a vote on the resolution 2022 to the, adding it to the regular agenda?
Councilmember Carey.
Yes.
Chilton.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Hutchings.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one abstention.
And resolution 2022-002 will be added to the agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the December 15, 2021 council meeting minutes. Ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2022-001, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,611 in the general fund for forfeited property introduced by the city manager, public hearing on January 26, 2022. Other items, action item, action memorandum 2022-001, vacate a 1,936 square foot portion of Endicott Drive cul-de-sac within Lot 1, Block 1, Slycock Creek, Alaska subdivision, plat number K1361. The right of way being vacated is unconstructed and located within the southeast quarter of section 36, Township 5 North, Range 11 West, Seward Meridian, Alaska, within the Kenai Peninsula Borough. Kenai Peninsula Borough file 2021-151B introduced by the acting city clerk, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak? Seeing none?
Is this for the, on the agenda?
The consent agenda. And seeing no hands raised. With no one wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing saying none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Move on to item four on the agenda, public comments and presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes aggregate. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda?
We did nine years for this to be on the other side. Pete Monarch, Saldana. No, I really, I really wanted to say thank you to the city of Saldana and the council. During my time as the police chief, you guys always had my back, you always supported. And I'd never, ever felt that you were, you know, when, when issues came up, that you were taking the other side, and I, I really appreciate that. And having the opportunity to work in Saldana, it was a new experience from being with the state. So many opportunities to change things without all the red tape. And so I just want to publicly say thank you for your support through those years. And also wanted to say thank you to city manager, Queen. I think she's doing some good stuff and I like what I see and I just hope you really show her support in a meaningful way, and I'm, I'm sure that you do, but it's, you know, when they say it's lonely at the top, it is. You don't, you don't have a lot of peer support and you're her peer support, so make sure you support her, so thank you.
Don't, don't leave. Yes, is there anyone from the council who would like to make any comments or say anything? Mr. Chilton.
I, I think I speak for the council and I say we're all deeply appreciative for all your years of service to the city. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Queen.
Well, thank you, Pete. And I didn't get to say it at the barbecue, but I'll say it now, especially now that your lovely wife's with you. I appreciate the nine years you've given to the city, in addition to what you gave the community when you were with the troopers, but you led the department with honesty and integrity and you maintained the public trust that entire time, which is really difficult to do because you have to earn it every single day. And I think you've shown that through your actions, you're handing off the department in a really good position in terms of the level of professionalism that we've achieved. So thank you for your service and I really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Chief, thank you. I would dittle what the city manager said, so it's been great working with you and I know we'll see you around town, so thank you for your years of service and enjoy all your fun projects.
Thanks.
And not done yet. It looks like your razor retired at the same time.
It did.
You know.
I've been doing this for 31 years, no more.
That's, actually, that's kind of what happened when I left the department. I haven't shaved since. But it's been a pleasure working with you, chief. You're always going to be the chief. You might as well get used to hearing that from, from, continue on. You've done a great job. The city really appreciates the work you've done. Personally, I hate to see you go, but I know what it, what it feels like to want to do something else and, and change, change course. I've worked under many chiefs over the years and I will honestly say you were probably the best one that I've seen and had the pleasure to work with. So good luck in your future. Definitely, we want to see you around here and keep active. We, we have a lot of commissions available and seats, so we can keep, we can keep you active. Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Now, I will continue on with what I was going to say. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone else here in the chambers that would like to say anything? Seeing none, I see no hands raised, so we'll move on to the next item. Assembly and legislative report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state and attendants who would like to speak? I see none here in the chambers and I see none on Zoom, so we'll move on to the next one. Administrative reports. Project update, report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'm gonna ask Public Works Director Kyle Cornelis to come up to the microphone along with CEO Rudstrom, and if you haven't had a chance to meet CEO, he's our project manager in the Public Works Department, been with us for just over a year now. And they're gonna run through the memo, giving you an update on where we're at in terms of projects, capital projects that were either completed in the last calendar year or significantly underway. I'll hand it off. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We have in front of you is kind of a select list of projects. It's a really broad list. Some of them are small, some of them are big. Some of them were primarily procurement and purchasing type efforts, which is, you know, time consuming as well. Things like a, like a tree purchase where, where our Parks Department did the installation, but we won't go over every one of these projects in, in detail, but maybe we'll talk about a few select projects and a few key points on them. The last two pages are just a few random pictures from 2021 of some of the projects that are described on the previous pages and then, and then one beautiful fake rendering of what the front entry to the sports center might look like at the end of construction. So we'll keep it pretty informal. We kind of cranked out this, this list recently and, you know, feel free to interrupt me or asking me or CEO any questions. Again, CEO Rudstrom's been, been here for, yeah, a bit over a year and has been a tremendous asset to the Public Works Department and, and project management as his primary, primary role. CEO's got a great background in mechanical engineering and civil engineering and a lot of hands-on stuff, so I was just talking to him about my boiler, getting tips from, from him on personal projects. So any questions before we start about, about these, these capital projects and, and list of work that was done in 2021? Okay, they're kind of broken up first, kind of the first page are projects that were completed in 2021 and the next two pages are active projects and most capital projects span multiple fiscal years. It's, it's, you know, really those small ones that are, that are, that were able to initiate and accomplish all in, say, one construction season or one fiscal year. So you'll see that, that some of the bigger projects are, are still active, but they may have been started in 2021 or even before, but they are broken out by the, by the year of which ones were completed in 2021 and which ones are ongoing. And if I don't get to one of, one of the projects that catches your eye, feel free to, to ask us a question anytime or afterwards. The first one, well, E core tech upgrade is a pretty fun project. You'll know we used CARES Act money for that. If you recall, early in the pandemic, you could not get your hands on hand sanitizer or disinfecting wipes or anything of that nature. I remember our maintenance manager, Sundberg, brought over two disinfecting wipes and said, oh, there's actually some on the shelf, but you can only get two, and immediately a handful of city hall employees went over and got two each. So this, this project really was a sweet spot in, in using CARES Act funds to accomplish the goals and objectives of CARES Act funding in, in mitigating pandemic issues and also achieving long-term benefit to the city and, and our utility fund. And what, what this project did is allow us to replace an old, an older sodium hypochlorite generation system at one of our wellhouses that essentially produces bleach using salt water and electricity. It's a pretty neat system. It's what we use to disinfect our drinking water before distributing it throughout our mains. The unit we had at wellhouse E was one of the early ones and was undersized. We, we were providing some of that bleach to different departments, including the police department, but we didn't have the capacity to produce excess amounts of it and still meet demands for our drinking water system. So we were able to replace that existing old system at well E and upsize it so that we would have an ample amount of disinfectant for use with, in our different departments and in the community. So it was a pretty neat project. We were able to accomplish most of it in-house, too, other than the equipment manufacturer and, and the functional checkout by, by their team and then a few subcontractors, electrical and controls specialists, but our utility employees purchased the parts and pieces and assembled piping and skids and, and really saved a bunch of money and did most of the work themselves, which was pretty impressive. So that's the well E core tech project, a pretty fun, exciting project, if you ask me. Landscape curve downtown tree purchase, Sterling Highway Riverside Drive right of way improvements. These are kind of related projects associated with right of way beautification, and I know that council had noted in the past how beautiful our downtown looked and, you know, these projects were a collaboration between, you know, Parks Department, the Planning Department, Public Works, and really, I think, had a visual impact on, on our downtown area. You know, DOT permitting, there's a lot, a lot of behind the scenes work that went into just planting a tree in the right of way. Asked John Zorneski about the process to get permission just to do it. So those were, were kind of fun projects that had a real tangible visual impact on our downtown. I promise I'll let you talk at some point, CEO. City Hall renovation. This was, this is really a preliminary investigation. No construction funding for it at this point, but, you know, conceptual level design and investigation on, on this building here with the goals of, of improving customer service, coming into compliance with appropriate building codes and particularly ADA. For example, our front counter is not ADA compliant. We do provide accessible, accessible means as needed, so we're, we're meeting the intent, but it's really not, not up to snuff. You know, we shouldn't have to provide alternative means when, when that need is, is there. So we need to, we need to address things like that. And also, we're also looking into the number of, of offices and ability to, to be nimble with, with number of employees and, and where our offices are and then also some efficiency and reliability of our buildings. CEO did a deep dive on, on the mechanical systems of our, of this building and included work from a mechanical engineering consultant.
Question?
Yeah.
It's okay if I take them this way?
Yes.
I'm just interested, kind of when you mentioned the ADA compliant, are you saying that we haven't been ADA compliant?
I think there's some issues, you know, the, the counter, the height of the counter and whatnot doesn't meet modern ADA codes. And if someone needs those, you know, someone comes in a wheelchair or something, we have to bring forms around to them or mount it at this table at the side.
So we, we, we provide reasonable accommodations, but, but what I'd like, what we would like to do is not have to provide reasonable accommodation and just be fully ADA compliant.
So let me try, and I, I heard the word modern and that, and so let me ask, and are we compliant?
Yes.
Because we have the adaptation.
Reasonable accommodations.
And so, okay, so we're reasonable and we're now going to talk about the concept by which we become more than just reasonable.
Where we don't need to take any action in order to provide fully ADA compliant services, correct?
Okay, that's kind of humorous.
We impose that on other people and for how long have we been not totally, completely, fully?
A good example would be multiple restroom facilities, you know, say, say that there is a restroom facility that's not ADA compliant, but you provide a reasonable accommodation and alternative so that you are providing it. In this case, in the front counter, we, we have the lower desks and tables and we, we make adjustments as needed, but it, it would be better if everything, if, if all bathrooms were ADA compliant, for example, and back to that example, so.
Thank you.
I will talk about the airport and then I'll let CEO talk a little bit about the cemetery. If you made it out to the Saldana Airport, you saw a lot of activity this summer. We had a significant grant from the FAA to allow us to completely reconstruct our runway. We pulverized all the existing asphalt. We modified the centerline profile to get rid of a small hump in the runway, which inhibited the line of sight of pilots. If you were sitting on one end of the runway with a small hump and small airplanes, it may have, it was, it was very close to where they would have difficulty seeing an aircraft at the, at the other end of the runway due to a, a vertical curve, if you will. So this project took that curve out, basically flattened the runway. And also, because we were doing that, we were able to completely replace all the edge lighting, the newest technology for airport lighting. All the taxiway tie-ins got redone. The existing NAVAIDS, the VASs, were replaced with PAPs as, as requested by the, the FAA visual approach slope indicator to precision approach slope indicators. We also had the runway shut down for most of the summer and we have a busy airport and we had the parallel taxiway, Bravo striped and painted and in use as a temporary runway for the entire summer. We, we received, I think, next to no complaints. In fact, most of the comments that were received in my office and in maintenance were positive. It was a really smashing success. It's not 100% complete. We were, we have, we've got a change order, we got authorization from FAA to replace some voltage regulators in, in our lighting building. It'll take place next, next spring. It's a long lead item and then a lot of miscellaneous grading and drainage type stuff, so.
As part of the reconstruction of the runway there, was, was it reconstructed at the same size as the previous runway or was there any expansion to support larger aircraft there in the future?
It was. Thank you for the question, Councilman Chilton. It was reconstructed to the same size. However, the excavation that we did, there was a lot of waste material. We were able to fill in the, essentially it was a pond, seasonal pond, that we got a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps that it was not a, a wetland and we could fill it in. And then we also had excess and so beyond the runway, we were able to use another waste area that would enable a future runway expansion. So the, the current project did not change the runway dimensions, but it did somewhat enable future expansions should it be necessary. Okay, thank you.
Just in terms of understanding, again, this being the huge project of the, the whole list. When we do something like, when something like this is done, do we actually do it? Are, are we the ones that is hiring everyone or, or does the FAA come in and, and basically kind of tell us who's going to do it and we, we can kind of oversee and watch? And I'm gonna assume that whoever we hire, they hire their own subcontractors, but I'm open if that's not accurate. But who, how, how much do we actually get to do as to, compared to how much does the FAA have their hands on or next?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Carey. The FAA provides the funding and a stack of rules, but they do not, they do not do any of the purchasing, procurement bidding. That is up to the sponsor, which is us, the city. Yep, so we, we apply for the grant and we get the grant for a particular project based on a cost estimate. This is kind of a weird part, the grant is actually based on the bid you get, so you have a, an estimated grant amount and then the city, we don't have the in-house design staff to do the design ourselves, so we solicit for professional services to do the design as needed. Enter in a contract with that design firm at our discretion, following the federal procurement rules. So we choose that, that, that professional, they do the design. We are then, we then seek permission to bid the project from FAA based on the results of the design and the construction cost estimate. They authorize the, the bidding of the construction portion of it and then we enter in a contract with, generally speaking, the low bid and the grant amount is based on that amount of the low bid with a 15% contingency allowable. So, so it is, all of the tools are in the city's, city's pocket. We are responsible for all forms of grant compliance and, and project delivery.
Hold on. Just, I'm, you, you got to it right away, of the contingency. So if there is some of the contingency left over, do we get to keep it?
Negative. We, we do not. In fact, we need to justify each and every expenditure. The change order I spoke of about the voltage regulators is a good example. It's act, that was actually an issue we realized later, you know, if we would have caught it during design, we would have incorporated it into the original contract documents, but as we replaced all the edge lighting and started popping circuits and having issues, we, we recognized that those voltage regulators were 30 something years old and have been repaired a number of times. We provided, my initial request to FAA resulted in a request for more information and we, we asked the contractor to, and consultant to provide some additional information to verify the quality and capability of those voltage regulators. Long story short, we went back to FAA and said, they're, they're on the verge of failure for the following reasons. Here's what they're showing and they do need to be replaced and they authorized that. Then resulted in a change order, so. So the, we do, we have to justify every dollar we spend and the 15% contingency allowance all has to be justified through FAA and whatever is not spent is returned to FAA.
Are any grant funds paid to city of Saldana employees as part of their yearly salary?
Mr. Carey, no. The grant funds are only.
So oversight?
No, they are not paid directly to, to employees. However, the, the grant under the, under the Airport Improvement Program, AIP FAA grant in this case, does allow administrative costs to be incorporated into the budget and we do, we do do that in certain projects when, when allowable. In this one, I believe we did. I don't have that figure with me, so we are able to capture employee time and offset operating budget costs in that sense. So my time spent at construction meetings and reviewing plans, I can charge to the grant up to a certain amount.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all your answers.
Okay, I'll turn it over to CEO, talk about some, some of the fun cemetery projects we had this summer.
Yes, the Memorial Park expansion. As you may know, the Memorial Park has been very popular and they were actually running out of plots to sell. And when we first built the Memorial Park, however many years ago, there was a planned phased expansion and this is phase two of it. So that, we did that project this summer, involved, you know, cutting down a bunch of the trees and flattening it out and a bunch of landscaping, new water line for irrigation. So the, it's easy for the Parks Rec guys to maintain that. They have irrigation installed there. Coming up this summer, we're gonna finish this phase two, doing all the decorative trees and shrubs and all that planting. That will come, we actually have that out to bid right now and we'll do that work this summer. Part of the work also includes all the surveying to stake all those plots. Every single plot gets a survey marker cap placed just below grade so the grass grows up, you don't see them, but they're there. Every plot is marked out, they got a numbering system. It's, had to work with the, with the clerk to make sure we get that all straight so we keep track of which, which plot is which. I guess that's a quick summary. Any questions about the project?
You said this was phase two and the park's been very popular.
Yes.
But are we ahead? Are we doing this sooner than we originally expected?
I think we are. Now, of course, as Kyle mentioned, I've only been here for a little over a year, so that's, that's before me, but that, that's been my understanding of that, yes, the, it's been filling up faster than was first expected.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that its popularity is, is probably higher than we had anticipated. The, the phasing was really loose. There was a, I don't even want to say a rendering, but a conceptual plan, area one, area two, area three. It was prudent to, to think about that as we had the raw land and, and built the road in there and made a loop so that we would have the ability to expand, but it was very, very leanly defined. So I think it is fair to say that, you know, we were fortunate to obtain this land from the borough. We make it available to all borough residents, not just city of Saldana residents. We make it available to all borough residents, not just City of Saldana residents. And I think its popularity has grown. We did do one small, wouldn't consider it an expansion. We did some clearing and grubbing in one small section. So this is really phase two of a really planned, defined, designed phase approach.
I'll just add, we hired Nancy Casey to come back and do the full build-out analysis and the council approved that master plan, I think it was last year. But the phase two that we just constructed and opened up to the public is roughly twice as big as all the plots we previously had. So in the last 10 years, we made it through kind of that first phase. I think we, at this current rate, we would estimate this phase two is about a 20-year capacity of the lawn plots. And phase two is even just two of three, four, maybe even five. So there's a lot of area there on that parcel to expand. And I think that was part of the analysis we went through with Ms. Casey and her design work recently to understand what that longevity of the whole park would be.
Thank you.
I will add, you know, I spent quite a bit of time on-site this summer there, you know, managing, watching the contractor and checking on things. And I was surprised at how many people come through and use the park just to walk on the trails and there's a nice trail along the river and it was a, there was quite a bit of activity there, people coming and using that space.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I heard a number of comments and criticisms from the nearby property owners about the noise level and the trees being taken down. Are we going to be putting in any trees between that subdivision and the backside of the Memorial Park?
Yes, that was an issue. I spoke personally with a bunch of the landowners there, just the, immediately to the north of the Memorial Park. And yes, we have already planted some bunch of lilacs along that end and there's more coming this summer. Now that we have all the big civil construction done this summer is when all the decorative planting, trees and shrubs are going in. And that is part of the plan. It's been part of the plan all along. Is there's some tall trees, some shorter trees to screen that north end off. And I will say we're, it's coming at just the right time because all of that woods, you know, we cut lots of trees down. They were all dead. It's all beetle kill spruce. And if we weren't doing this project, I mean, it would have just been open just due to natural causes. So really, it's going to work out good. All that dead, that beetle kill spruce is going away. And we have, you know, start on these, this decorative buffer between there and that neighborhood.
I've walked that path back through there and, yeah, there are a lot of, lot of dead trees. Still a lot of dead trees out there.
Yeah, oh, there's more to go, yes. We'll be dealing with that.
And when you're done with your report, I have a couple of other questions.
I'll just add to that same topic. I think we've got about a $70,000 to $80,000 project on the bid right now for the decorative landscaping at the Memorial Park. It's, I'm not sure when the bids are due, a week or two. Plenty of time so that landscaping firms can order the decorative trees that come from all over the place.
Yeah, we'll have those, should be in the ground in June. We'll have the rest of the, all the decorative planting there. And we started, we already started a little bit. We had extra trees with different projects. We started a little bit last year, but the bulk of it's all going to go in this spring.
I'll jump to the next project, the wastewater treatment plant bio solids de-watering. This is, you've probably heard it as called the screw press project. Kind of one of the final stages at the treatment plant is our aerobic digester where things get pretty thick and we try to reduce the waste as much as we can. But at the end, we got to pull, so a lot of that, not solids, it's primarily, it's wet, but it's got a lot of solids in it. We had a polymer or a thickener to coagulate, try and bunch all that solids up as much as we can. And then it's still, you know, 90-something percent water and we need to, we need to de-water it before we dispose of it because we dispose of the sludge at the landfill and you pay to play to transport and to dispose of by weight. And so there's various different de-watering methods. So you have that, it's an activated sludge plant and we, you know, have a lot of microorganisms and bugs, if you will, that are utilized in the treatment process before we discharge our effluent. And so that biomass, we need to dispose of on a frequent basis. And it's common for all aerobically digested wastewater treatment plants. So what we have currently is a belt press. We take this product, again, we add a polymer to it, we try to thicken it and then it just runs between rollers and then we squeeze it and water drops out and what you're left is filter cake and that's what we take to the landfill. It's dry and you can crumble it, but it's only, what are we achieving, 20%? So we're only really, you know, it's mostly water still by weight. That belt filter press does a great job, but it is, it is old. The manufacturer no longer makes them. They no longer make parts. We routinely have to manufacture parts. GLM is one of our, one of our friends, which you don't want to have to be doing. So we looked at various different technologies. There's a lot of different options out there now. There's centrifugal force that will de-water. There's screw presses that turn and squeeze. There's drying beds, like in Homer, you set it out and dry and just let it naturally de-water. So we went through a process and analyzed our specific sludge, our treatment process and the results of that analysis indicated that the screw press is probably the best option for us based on our needs. And so at the stage of this project we're at now, as we've identified a screw press as being the preferred technology for our wastewater treatment plant, we have, with the assistance of a consultant, engineering consultant firm, issued a request for proposals to screw press manufacturers to submit their, their product for inclusion in our construction bidding documents. So it'll be the basis for design when we issue a invitation to bid for a contractor to reconstruct the building that houses this, the piping, the valving, and then purchase and install this particular screw press unit. So it's one of the long-term projects that's been identified in our, in our five-year plan and I believe it's in our, it definitely is also in our master plan for the wastewater treatment plant. It's one of the big critical components to all wastewater treatment plants.
Quick question. So we, we're currently discharging that over the landfill. We're paying by weight when we drop that over there and the current system is maybe getting it down to 20% water with the new screw press system. Are we going to be able to get that down even further and potentially have any cost savings by having less weight in the routine waste disposal over the landfill to offset that cost?
Excellent question. You want to deal with it?
The new technology is going to be about the same output, same product. There's this, there's of course a, you know, this analysis that squeezing more water out is complicated and expensive. So you have to do that, that balance. And most operations, treatment plants here in Alaska and all over the country end up at about 20%. That's kind of the industry standard.
Solids.
20% solid. To go farther than that, it's a big energy input to do it. This, this process will save us on maintenance and labor. The existing machine, not only is it old and it's hard to get parts for, but it has all kinds of moving parts and pieces and belts and it requires a lot of operator attention. The new machines are very streamlined, very low maintenance. It's like push the button and it just runs. And so that's great. To reduce that, maintenance and labor will be a savings.
Yeah, we, as the CEO said, we don't, we don't foresee a, a cost savings from, we pay to transport it and then we also pay to dispose it. It is 20% solid, so it's still primarily water. It does the best it can. This will probably achieve that or a little bit less. But as the CEO said, significant managerial savings in labor and operating. This thing can run at night, whereas right now, when it's running, it needs constant attention. It will free our team up to accomplish everything else that's on their to-do list. So I do believe there'll be a small energy component to it as well. But as the CEO said, this thing, you can set it to run at night, which was mind-boggling to me when we first looked into it. It's, it's going to be a great, a great change to our treatment plant and for our crew down there. So you want to touch on the major maintenance renovations since we just issued the notice to proceed? And then I'll touch on the discharge department and we'll conclude and wait for final questions.
Yeah, the SRSC major maintenance and renovation project is kind of a multiple. That's, of course, the sports complex, the ice arena. The building is, I should know, 38 years old or something like that and lots of parts of the building have just reached their useful life and need updating, replacing. So this project is going to achieve a couple of goals. It's going to fix all those things, exterior doors, there are a lot of exterior doors, 80-some doors, better steel doors and they're getting rusty. They live in a tough, humid environment, so we're replacing all those doors. Locker room showers, new fixtures, there's some tile flooring and surrounds, all that stuff to spruce those locker rooms up, make them nicer. Addressing some concerns out in the parking lot, fixing up the parking and making a better access and ADA parking and improving that, making store work easier. The, I'm sure if you've been in the arena, you've all seen there's that big popcorn ceiling over the bleachers, which is pretty dated and stained. That's going to all get replaced and updated. Bunch of seismic bracing to get that up to more modern seismic code. Repainting the whole arena. And then the Parks and Rec offices. You know, those offices in there serve the, all the skaters and all the ice use, but that's really, that's the home for the Parks and Recs department also. And the way they're laid out currently is kind of awkward. I will say when I was a new citizen here 10 years ago, I remember taking the community ed class or something. I had to go and pay my fee there and you walk in and you're kind of like, is this really the right spot? So those offices are getting a remodel, actually knocking a couple of walls down and moving doors. There's a counter kind of like here that's really tall, doesn't meet modern standards. It's actually so tall when little kids come to rent skates, they can hardly reach up to the top of the counter. So we're going to fix those things, fix the appearance up, make the face of the Parks and Rec department a little more user-friendly, a little more public. I think that's all the highlights. That project, yes, we did just award that oh, just a week or two ago. The contractors getting all their submittals and ordering materials. Of course, everything's a long, long time these days. But then construction is scheduled to start, the actual construction, in mid-May. Once all the ice is out of the arena and all that's done, the contractor will be in there, work through the summer to have the construction done before ice goes back in the fall.
Mr. Carey?
So we're going to have this wonderful transformation of this facility that's been serving us for all these decades. We're going to have wonderful new paint, great new doors. We're going to have artistic things done in the locker rooms. This is going to be a facility that will continue to be a pride of our community, correct?
Yes.
Good, because I like that energy as compared to talking about how old everything is. Because I, I think this facility has served a huge purpose. It's met a lot of needs for tens of thousands of people. And I think part of us promoting it is to, again, to have that attitude that it's going to be awesome as it will continue to serve the people here. Thank you.
That's a good summary of it. I appreciate it better than I...
I'll just add one more thing. We are, we also did incorporate a new reader board sign out there, which will, yep, which, which will be, you know, a huge part of that visual aspect and it will, I think it's going to look great. It'll be a pretty exciting change to out there. It'll actually be a working sign too. Andrew will be excited about that. But we, you know, CEO did a lot of work with the design team and with Parks to, to look at our existing signs and our gateway signs and try and figure out something that worked, worked well for that facility, so.
Yep, yeah, that's the plan. The new, the new electronic reader board sign is going to be kind of the same kind of look and feel as our gateway signs and our other park signs and have a, you know, a consistent brand for the city. So it's obvious that this is the city of Saldana's sports center.
And I will, I will wrap up before taking further questions by talking about the, one of the longer projects on this list are Alaska Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Renewal, which is our permit to discharge our wastewater treatment plant effluent into the receiving waters.
If you guys thought bio solids de-watering was exciting, wait until you hear the details on that.
This is, this, this is, this is good and it's exciting also. And we are, we have the opportunity to work with DEC and EPA to try and adopt site-specific criteria using the biotic ligand model. So essentially what we're doing is we have concluded a two-year sampling program that was established in a quality assurance, quality assurance project program approved by DEC and EPA, where we gathered a lot of data on the receiving waters and on our effluent and performed a lot of studies using this complex algorithm and model known as the biotic ligand model. And we are demonstrating what, what is and isn't harmful to aquatic life based on the exact water quality makeup of our receiving waters and our exact effluent, rather than using broad hardness-based equations and other criteria to establish discharge limits for copper and zinc in this case. Where we're at right now, we concluded the sampling. We put together our summary reports. We have been going back and forth with DEC and EPA with our summary report of the status and our request to use site-specific criteria using this BLM. We have been having meetings and working back and forth using our consultant, who's been advising the city. Where we're at right now, the state, DEC has started to put together their technical support document, which basically is a really huge milestone for this. It is their support and their support document for our approach. The reason being, it's a unique approach and EPA has to, has to go through the approval process and then a rulemaking process with the, with the state of Alaska. So most of the technical aspects of this project have been accomplished and we are in the back and forth report and discussion phase with DEC and EPA. And none of that phase is quick, but it is, it is progressing satisfactorily. And in fact, once we reach this technical support document stage with DEC, we are really excited and DEC is eager to move forward in supporting this. And I don't have a conclusion date for you because we are working with EPA Region 10 and EPA headquarters. So we do want to, we do want to impress emergency though because longer is not always better with changes in rules, changes in administrations, changes in a lot of different things. So that's where we're at with the discharge permit. It has been a long-going project. We do see light at the end of the tunnel and we have received positive, positive milestones on that project.
Mr. Carey?
I want to be real clear that what I'm going to say is about them, okay? Not about us here. I mean, this was, you know, $438,000 again. And dealing with government and some other organizations I've been a part of, just to get signatures on pieces of paper, you know, pay $25,000 to get this signed or $40,000 for this permit. One permit might cost them maybe five or six hours of work and others maybe hundreds of hours of work, but it's still the same amount you pay no matter what. And so I just, I'm interested, because again, you guys are the experts. In the past, and it certainly wasn't my term, but I've heard the term institutional bribes, that you just pay just to get the government to give a signature. I do remember here in the past where we waited three years to get a signature so we... I do remember here in the past where we waited three years to get a signature so we could do some work on the airport. And again, basically, one of the guys didn't like us and so he just wouldn't sign, but there wasn't a fee with that. But again, sometimes there's institutional and so my real question. Do we, and, and I was really pleased with the stuff you, you started at the beginning because it kind of answers it. But do we actually get much for this four hundred and thirty-eight thousand? I know we have to pay it, so I'm not resisting, because we'd just all die if we resist government. Do we get four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth?
Excellent question, Councilmember Carey. The very short three letter answers, yes. We, we, we do in, in a few senses. One, it's, a lot of it is consulting fees, but there is a lot also, you know, I was shipping fifty-pound, two fifty-pound coolers to Washington State twice a month because there is no laboratory in the state of Alaska that could, you know, do the, the testing and the clean room conditions that we required. And so there's, there's, there's consulting, contracting, other such costs. There is certainly, there is certainly red tape and paperwork costs incorporated into that budget as, as you duly noted. There's also, there's also benefit to, you know, taking our time and working through this slowly and methodically. This actually represents, I don't know if I should say five years. I will tell you this, our discharge permit has been expired and administratively extended for a number of years. And so I don't want to use the word buying us time, but the regulatory agencies have, at their request, administratively extended our permit and not required us to implement very costly improvements at the wastewater treatment plant while we're embarked on this journey. So there's, there's a, there's an ancillary benefit there too as well. And I do think that it's responsible of us because we are going through very expensive process to ensure that we are environmentally responsible and that we are establishing limits that are very specific to, to our receiving waters and, and our effluent. So that's the, that's the long version of yes.
And I just want to respond to that. That's really helpful. I mean, really, and I think a whole lot of our, I believe, a good deal of our citizenry would really benefit from hearing what you just said. Again, again, about the time and how it helped us and what it did when you talk about having to send stuff outside. Those types of details, although for some, you might find that trivial, I think that helps people understand what our government really does. And I also want to say I'm really pleased because, Kyle, you're obviously a, a good advocate for government workers and what they're doing. But that came across well. I, I hope you're hearing this as a compliment.
Absolutely.
Okay, that you're the type person I want to see work for the city of Saldana. Not only do you have integrity, but also we're going to do the things that we're supposed to do and particularly on something like wastewater treatment. So I just want to say, your answer to me, and, and I understand, maybe other people may feel I'm wasting their time, but this is really helpful to me.
Vice Mayor Parker?
If I may add my shorter answer to, you know, the question being, do we get anything for this four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars? And I think the quick answer, which is what Kyle said more, the quick answer is we get the assurance that we're doing a good job discharging into the river. This is, part of this study is, is assuring, it's proving that, hey, we are taking care of our, really our valuable resource. And that's what I think is the best thing we got out of that, all this time and effort, is the assurance that we're doing a good job and we're not polluting that river.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you for the presentation tonight. In my previous life, having worked for a company that needed to renew, it was still an NBDES permit back then. It took us eight years from the time that we made the application, which the permit had not expired and in accordance with the rules, as long as the permit is not expired, you can continue to operate in compliance with that permit. So I know it takes time and I know it takes diligence and thanks, guys, for, for sticking with it. I had a couple of questions related overall to the overall capital projects. The first one is, what's the percentage of work that has been completed by local contractors?
I can't give you an exact figure, but I can give you the, a broad statement of the overwhelming majority since our biggest project by far is our airport reconstruction runway project, which the prime contractor is Connect Construction, a local construction firm based here in Saldana, or very on the edge. So overwhelming proportion due to that. A lot of the smaller projects obviously are as well, HR office remodels, a local carpenter contractor. Many, many of them are. Some of the, I'd say it's a toss-up when it comes to the professional services. We do have a, a broad array of really good professional services in our area. Some of the stuff like the wastewater treatment plant and those, those specific genres. We have our consultants from Anchorage and the biosolids de-watering, and they're a local Anchorage firm who is an expert in water and wastewater and is doing a great job. On the discharge permit, we have HDR who has an Anchorage office, but is a global firm. And is, that's been a really good asset for us because part of their team is, has been part of the, the team that helped develop some of the biotic ligand model systems. So, so I can't give you an exact figure, but I can tell you that a large portion is our, our local contractors. And we do enjoy when we see that and we do have a, you know, a great professional and, and contracting community.
And one, one more question. Through the course of these projects, have you had any unexpected items occur that caused you issues or concerns?
There's always bumps in the road. I can't think of any, I can give you an example of, of a somewhat humorous bump in the road that we discovered recently. It's not on this list, but it was a previous airport improvement grant. We built a snow removal equipment building, a three million dollar grant project. And then we had recent power outages. And that's when we realized that the electronic gate doesn't work when there is no power. And we did not install a mangate. So small bump in the road, should we need to access that building when the power is out? The good news is we have a mangate sitting in our boneyard that we will be installing here shortly. If, if you're on the inside, it's, you can activate it and everything's groovy, but if you're on the outside. So always, always a few little missteps. But for the most part, I can't think of any, any big, any big issues. You know, like I mentioned on the airport project this summer, there are change orders. Change orders are a fact of life. You know, they're, they're a part of every construction project. Not, it's very uncommon if, if every little thing has been thought of ahead of time. And for the most part, like working with our local contractors, you know, we work great with them. We get fair, fair pricing and we negotiate those things and make sure that it's groovy and move forward.
I'll add, you know, in that our climate these days with the pandemic the last couple of years, pricing and availability of labor have really been a struggle. I mean, I think we're all seeing it even in our personal life, but it's, you know, contractors are having a hard time finding skilled labor and keeping skilled labor and contractors are all busy. And then procuring materials has been, both difficult to get and pricing has been very volatile. So that's, that's made it more challenging to, to plan some of these projects.
I do have one comment. The, actually, maybe a couple of comments. Seems like I've been on the council for going on a little over eight years and it seems like we've been talking about this discharge permit at least that long, if not longer. So I guess my question is, if this all happens and everything lines up perfectly and we get the permit renewed, how long will that last?
I think the permits are on a five-year renewal cycle. However, you know, the, the part that, and, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure they're on, they, our existing permit is on a five-year permitting cycle, but we haven't had a new permit in some time. So five years is, is the renewal period for the permit. But we expect that this portion of the permit would, would be, can't guarantee it, but we would expect it to, to last longer than that. Based on, based on not having significant change in conditions, both in the receiving water and our effluent. Should things change drastically, obviously, that's rough.
And my other comment is, under the new infrastructure bill, there's quite a bit of funding in there for water and wastewater work. So I would hope we are really looking seriously at any project that we might be able to get that funding for well in advance of when we.
Yeah, I think we are keeping our ear to the ground. A lot of the funding we recognize is going to be going into existing programs that we know about or are aware and, and are, we don't typically use, although we, we have, mostly loans. You know, state revolving fund loans and, and existing programs, a lot of money to build safe water. But we are eagerly anticipating new programs and we'll be keeping our eye out for opportunities in the water and wastewater, all of the sectors for the infrastructure bill, for new programs that we, that we may be able to take advantage of.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item seven, public hearings, testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. First ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two seven, authorized in the city manager and city attorney to sign an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for a grant provided under the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, for the Saldana Municipal, Municipal Airport and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by thirty-two thousand dollars in the airport fund introduced by city manager. May I have a motion to an act?
Move to an act.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This ordinance would allow us to sign a grant agreement and accept funds for the purpose of funding operations at the airport. And it's through the ARPA legislation, but it's similar to previous COVID-related relief bills where they had designated specific funding for airport use. And it's flexible in that it can fund operational expenses. So acceptance of this grant will have the effect of reducing our expenditures in the airport account by thirty-two thousand dollars. And Melanie would work to report eligible expenses as we incur them. But it's broad in that it can fund things that otherwise our, our airport fund would have to have funded. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak on the item. And looking at Zoom, I see no raised hands. So we're back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two seven passes on a six-zero vote. Moving on to item eight, new business, that would be Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one, amending a job title in the Parks and Recreation Department from administrative clerk two to administrative assistant, reclassifying the position from a salary range seven to a range eleven, and amending the authorized staffing table in the FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three operating budget to reflect the changes introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Vice Mayor Parker?
Move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, for the second. I'll report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This was a new position. We have had one person hold this position. It was added recently to provide better customer service at the Parks and Recs department. It recently became vacant again and prior to re-advertising that position, we reviewed the, the existing job duties and responsibilities. And my opinion was that they were low, the way it had previously been classified at a range seven and that the actual work that was being performed by that person was more similar to an administrative assistant that we have in many different departments, public works, finance, streets and maintenance. And those are all a range eleven position. So I'm requesting that the council reclassify that to a range eleven. This resolution has the effect of essentially amending that staffing table in the operating budget. So it would reclass that from a range seven to a range eleven. It would update the position title. We're not proposing to make changes to the job description itself because I think already it's fairly aligned with, with what administrative assistants are doing in other departments within the city. It has an annual impact of approximately seven thousand dollars that reclass. We are not asking for additional funding for the current fiscal year we're in for the remainder of this year. However, if this was approved at the mid-biennium, prior to the start of, of the fiscal, fiscal year that begins July one, this would potentially be one of several updates that we bring back to the council for consideration for amending an FY twenty-three. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, our public testimony is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak on the item. And looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. Having, hearing no one, having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for a roll.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker? Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zeros, zero two passes on a six-o vote. Moving on to the next item is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, amending the authorized use for COVID-nineteen community funding from the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services Grant to include temporary emergency leave for city employees introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you to the council for allowing this to be added to the agenda for consideration tonight. I have, for the past several weeks, been working, soliciting input from department heads and working to update our internal employee COVID personnel rules. And those outline the expectations of our employees in terms of what to do if they're sick, what to do if they believe they've been potentially exposed to COVID, isolation periods, et cetera. And one of the pieces of the proposal that I'd like to ask the council for authorization for is reinstituting a temporary emergency leave. The city has provided employees with temporary emergency leave at several points in time during the pandemic, mostly early on. Those were traditionally funded through CARES Act funding. I think it's going to be an important piece of our policy, especially over the next few weeks, the next month or so. Because really what we're trying to do is allow employees to test often. We're going to be giving them at-home tests that they can self-administer if they believe they've been potentially exposed or if they're not feeling well and they're not sure if the symptoms might be COVID or something unrelated. But really, I wanted to remove any financial barrier from people fully complying with the policy in terms of not being afraid to report a positive case because they're concerned about their ability to miss and isolate for those five days. The, when we were working on the updated draft, we did some looking around to potentially identify funding sources. And one of our existing grants does allow emergency leave as an eligible use. It's the community funding grant through DHSS. The original amount was a hundred and ninety-five thousand and then we requested an additional hundred thousand. So we already have an existing grant agreement with the state for this particular funding. And we've been using it primarily through our subrecipient agreement with Saldana Professional Pharmacy to staff the walking clinic at the Y. Approval of this resolution would authorize me to work with DHSS to add that temporary emergency leave as an additional line item that's eligible under that grant. They've already identified it as an eligible use, but this would also. but this would authorize me to update our grant agreement for the purpose of providing employees with up to 40 hours of paid leave if they are positive with COVID. Operationally, I think that's important because in many of our departments, we are small departments and the work is very specialized. For example, we spent a lot of time tonight talking about the wastewater plant. We only have four operators. It would be very difficult for us to operate in a situation where we potentially had had two or maybe more folks who were out sick at a time. So by granting this leave, I think we're supporting our employees to stay home and make the right choices if they are in fact sick. And I'd be happy to answer questions. And thank you for, as I mentioned, adding this to the agenda tonight for consideration.
Thank you. Now I'll go into the public comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one in the chambers wishing to speak on this matter. Will you move to Zoom? And I see no hands raised. Having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Question for the manager. Is there such a thing as permanent emergency leave?
To Mr. Carey through the mayor. So the other paid leave that employees have is their personal leave, which is accrued at a rate commensurate with how long they've been with the city. So currently, the city provides paid personal leave. And what we've been doing most recently is that if someone had to quarantine or had to be out of work due to COVID or any other unrelated illness, they would be using their own personal leave. We used the term temporary emergency leave for those two or three previous times when we issued leave during the COVID pandemic. So that's just the phrase that we've used. I'm not aware of what a permanent version of that would look like. When we'd done this in the past, it was for a time-limited amount of time. So we would provide up to 40 hours for individuals and they would be eligible to use that leave up to a certain date, at which point it would expire.
So what I'm, can I continue for this? So what I'm trying to understand is, it sounds like it's emergency leave. And so I guess I don't understand what's different between emergency leave and temporary emergency leave?
Mr. Carey, through the mayor. So the wording of emergency is not critical. That's just what we had called additional leave that was granted above and beyond what's outlined in the Personnel Code. This particular leave would only be used if an employee tested positive for COVID. It's not related to or tied to a declared emergency. As you know, we're not under a declared emergency. But that's just from the HR world, what we had been calling it is just an additional leave that the city has the ability to grant for a set amount of time, specific very much to COVID isolation.
And did I hear you say, I believe so, that the grant itself, it does use the term temporary emergency leave? Is that accurate? I thought you said that.
Mr. Carey, through the mayor. That's the term we've used throughout the pandemic for additional leave. The grant itself, I don't know that they would call it that necessarily.
Okay. And so, and I'm not trying to believe this. So we're not trying to carve out anything particular. It was just that's the term that we've been using, temporary emergency.
Right. And through the mayor, earlier on in the pandemic, when we were in a formal declared emergency, the council had granted me authorization to act above and beyond temporarily suspending rules. And so the earlier iterations of this leave, I had the authority to implement and then report back to the council. Now that we're no longer operating under that framework, I felt it would not be within my powers to grant additional leave that's not specified in the Sodatna Personnel Code, the municipal code, without coming to the council to seek authorization and identifying that funding source.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the explanation.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. City manager, can you refresh us what the city policy is with respect to employees, our COVID policies?
Sure. Vice Mayor Parker, through the mayor. The policy that I'm going to be implementing later this week, it's in some ways similar to what we've been doing with some new aspects. So we are still requesting that any employee who's experiencing potential symptoms of COVID, that they get tested. Now, previously, they'd been doing that through one of the local providers that's offering testing. It's covered under our health insurance. But one of the new things that we'll be doing is allowing people to self-administer those at-home tests themselves. So that's going to provide some additional flexibility to employees if they've got a headache or if they've got a sore throat and they want to just double-check. They'll now have the ability to do that at home. So we ask them to test if they've experienced any of those symptoms that potentially could be COVID. We are asking them to isolate in accordance with the timeframe outlined by the CDC. So those were recently updated and we've updated the policy to reflect the new guidance from CDC about isolation timeframes, as well as wearing a mask when you come back to work within that 10-day period from when you tested positive. We've got guidelines on quarantining. However, the new version of the policy will potentially get people back to work sooner as long as they comply with some additional protocols. So people will be allowed to come to work if they believe they may have been exposed, but they will be wearing a mask, they will be testing on day five, and we will be potentially working to give them some more space. So they'll be working with their supervisor to minimize contact either with coworkers or the public. All of these things together, I think, give us reasonable assurance that we're taking adequate steps as an employer to maintain a healthy workplace for our employees, but also to protect the public as they come to us to access our services. So we've had a policy like that for some time. It's been periodically updated. I think this would be version number six that I'm getting ready to roll out that we talked about with all the department heads on Tuesday. In terms of masks, our employees, I just ask that they wear masks whenever they can't maintain social distancing. So currently, if they're indoors and they're within six feet of a coworker or a member of the public, everybody's got them with them, they'll put it on. If they're in a private office or they've got space or they're working outdoors, we're not requiring them to do that at this point. So that's generally kind of the basis of what we're asking folks to do at this point.
Ms. Hutchings?
Is this a one 40-hour per employee? Or if they get COVID more frequently, do you give them 40 hours each time?
Ms. Hutchings, through the mayor. I imagine this would be a one-time leave bank, essentially. There would be 40 hours added to a person's leave bank. We would track it separately from personal leave. It doesn't have any monetary value, you couldn't cash it out. But for the amount of time where we felt that the leave was necessary, they would have those 40 hours. And if they tested positive, they would be eligible to use that time. I will point out that many of our employees may not need to use this leave at all because many of us can telework. We, you might remember me talking about rolling out a telework policy. We did that actually early in 2020. So for example, if I were to test positive or department head or many of our employees who can accomplish their work from home or another location, potentially, they would be able to still work. They would just be doing it remotely and they also may not need to dip into this leave. It's mostly for folks if in the case that someone was very ill and couldn't work or they were in a position where telework wasn't offered to them, they potentially would be able to use these 40 hours during the period of time where we make it available.
Any other, Mr. Carey?
I was just wondering, in our policy for employees during those time periods in which they're required to wear masks, do we state what type of masks? There's certainly been a lot of discussion, particularly recently, on the efficacy of different types. Do we have a stated expectation of what type of mask?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Currently, we do not. And as you mentioned, there's been some changing guidance on which type of masks might be more effective. What we have done is we will provide masks to employees at no cost. We've got different kinds. We just ordered some new of the K and 95 masks that are a little bit tighter fitting and a lighter, maybe a bit higher level of protection for folks. But at this point, we have allowed people to choose whatever they're most comfortable with. And that's worked out okay for folks in terms of them making that choice. But certainly, up until now, we've also tried to educate people. So even though we're not mandating a particular mask, we've tried to share good information as we get it in terms of what folks can be considering to keep themselves and the people around them safest.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one abstention.
Resolution 2022-002 passes on a five zero vote with one abstention. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is mayor and council reports. Mayor's report and proclamations. So there's no proclamations this evening. I will mention a couple of things that have gone on here recently. In December, I was honored to be invited to the grand opening of the VA clinic over across the street from the Heritage Place. That is now open and fully, almost fully functional. They don't have a flagpole up yet. They'll have to do that come springtime. It's an absolutely beautiful facility, much larger than their old system over in Kenai and much more convenient because it's a one-stop shop now. It's, they're going to have audiology in there, podiatry, counseling, homeless coordinator and things like that. Like I said, we had a tour of it. It's a gorgeous facility. And I'm glad to see our veterans have got such a nice facility and here in Sodatna. The other one is the city mayors of Seward, Kenai, Homer and myself in Sodatna. We had a brief meeting here last week to discuss issues that are common to all of us here on the four cities. We're planning on doing this more often, maybe at least on a quarterly basis, to discuss issues that affect all of us and see what we can do and bring forth hopefully some solutions and some new ideas. There's the other one that is the Sea Belt group. That met last week. Maybe it was this week. Trying to keep track of time now. And that is the coastal communities that, even though we're not a coastal community, we participated in it. When I say we, the city of Sodatna participated in it because anything that happens to our three communities here on the peninsula, that our seacoast communities affects us. So we're lending our support. They're going to expand this group or at least make it more visible. It's going to be kind of on the lines of the Rail Belt community, but it's going to be the Sea Belt. And there'll be more, hopefully more support coming through for projects that will help these coastal communities. Another quick thing, we are due for our annual photos. So the city clerk will be contacting everyone to get together so we can hopefully in February, maybe even do a group shot of all of us together instead of having a montage like we did last year. So I think Mr. Nelson will need a photo. Maybe Ms. Hutchings, I think. Did you get a new photo? So there'll be, the city clerk will be contacting everyone on that. Reminder to everyone, it's that time of year to file the APOC reports. I can't remember what the deadline is. I think it's the end of March or something like that.
Through the mayor, it's March 15.
So just pop online and get it done. I did it on Sunday, did that and PFD filing. AML is in February. I don't know if anyone's planning on going, but it'll be in June. Plans are still to be an in-person meeting. We'll meet with some of the legislators down there, assuming that the Capitol is open and they don't have any restrictions on it. And the last one on my thing is I will not be here physically for the January 26 meeting, but I will participate by Zoom. And I would ask Vice Mayor Park to actually conduct the meeting here in person. And that's all I have. So moving on to council reports and boards and commissions. Sodatna Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Ms. Hutchings.
So I went to the meeting. It was a rather short meeting. Caitlin Butler was re-elected as chair and Charlene Popfest as vice chair. Mr. Szasnarsky did a great job of giving us a year of 2021 in view. And then the big discussion was the core downtown, how we want the businesses that we would like or they would like to see in the core to work and how much property is actually out there as we all think that there's no property left. But there's quite a bit in that core. But they only looked at the Seward Highway. They didn't look at the Kenai Spur. So some of the items that they thought we should have in the Seward Highway, we already, or Sterling Highway, we already had in the Spur Highway. So, you know, there's a little bit of not looking at the whole picture. Our core is Kenai Spur and Sterling Highway. But it was very interesting. John brought some really good maps and layouts so we can see where we're going. And that was about it.
Thank you. There's no other council reports this evening. We'll move on to item 10, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. First, and it was a nice visit. I wanted to thank Chief Mulnarick. His last day was Friday. I have named Lieutenant Dwayne Cant as the interim chief. And we are currently advertising the position, internal applicants only. So for this week, we're going to advertise internally as required under our code. And I hope to be able to update you soon about how that process is going. We had a meeting with Marcus Mueller from The Borough. The Borough obtained some really advanced pictometry, which is the ortho, the above images, either from satellite or airplane. They acquired them for the whole Borough, but I think primarily to assist with assessing department. But they have the ability through that contract to share that data with other municipalities. And so we met with The Borough and the city of Kenai together to discuss the potential of a draft memorandum of understanding whereby The Borough could share that data with us and we would have access to that imagery. So we provided some comments back to them on the draft MOU and I hope to be able to bring that forward soon. But it'd be really neat to have that. It assists us in lots of different things from planning to projects to just generally, that imagery is great to have. It's been some years since we've updated ours or that they've acquired updated imagery. So it's going to be really helpful to us in general to be able to work with them on that.
Question? Is it okay now? Would that be anything like what we have behind us? Behind is, does it have that quality of update?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. It is of a quality that we have never had. So if you think of pixels being a cube of earth, I think the highest resolution imagery I've ever seen is maybe in like the half a meter. So if you can think of every one and a half feet, that's a pixel. This imagery is at like three inch or six inch. So it is very high resolution imagery. They have building footprints from that data. They've got the ability to kind of view structures from several different directions, very high-quality imagery. And they had acquired it for the eastern peninsula, Seward area, and then I think for the other, the remainder of the peninsula. I think they're also planning to upload it to the public viewers. So for the public who accesses The Borough's GIS, the interactive mapper, I believe that Bobby Lay, their GIS tech, had indicated that that might also be available for the public to view. But it would also enable us to download it onto our own system and use it in mapping, planning, et cetera. Very high resolution.
Would you anticipate that that would include, could we get a possible cost if we wanted to do something like that?
Thank you, Mr. Carey.[1728.98] We'll certainly look into that. Part of what this MOU will outline for us is what are the allowable uses based on their contract? And if we wanted to potentially update some of the things we've got here, I'll certainly look into that.
That'd be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple more things are on my list. Mr. Cornelius and I had a meeting with two of Senator Murkowski's staff members, Jane Conway, who's in the local office, and then Angela Ramponi, who was visiting from the DC office. Angela has been tasked with soliciting questions related to the infrastructure bill, of which we all are quite excited to talk about and learn more about. I think it was a very good conversation. We were able to refamiliarize them with some of the council's priority projects. And we plan to have a follow-up meeting that we'll schedule with the DC staff because it sounds like this infrastructure bill, although many of them were intimately involved, some of them even in writing and drafting legislation, it's a big bill and there's many pieces of it. So they've graciously offered for us to have a meeting where we can run through the project list with all the relevant team members so that if there's opportunities for any of our projects to fit in any of those funding pathways, they can help us identify those. So we've got the five-year capital plan and although we normally format, format that chronologically, we're working on a new formatting which will group it by topic. So transportation projects would be together, water sewer products together, parks and economic development would be together. So we're currently updating that and as soon as we do, we'll share that with you and the public. But also primarily, the audience is going to be state and federal legislators and their staff so that we can get them our projects and hopefully they're memorable and they'll stick in the front of their mind as opportunities become available. Couple other quick things. Mr. Zaransky had a meeting, I think yesterday, with FEMA and the state regarding our wildfire prevention grant application. This is the Spruce Park Beetle funding he identified maybe two years ago. And they are, the purpose of the meeting was to update us on the progress of the environmental assessment, the EA that they're going to be doing. It's required that they do this and they want to actually get on site prior to giving us the formal approval for the grant funds. And it sounds like they may be able to do that in June. Following that, when they complete the EA, there will be a public comment period. And so if everything goes according to plan, best case scenario is we might expect to see that funding award offer in the fall. This is the roughly 300,000 that we potentially would be receiving to help us mitigate wildfire risk by removing Spruce Park Beetle. So that, it's forward progress. It's slow, but happy to at least have a little bit more information on, on the timing of that EA process moving forward. Want to give a quick kudos. I received a very appreciative voicemail today from a longtime resident on Endicott. He's been there since the eighties and he said the, the snowplow operator is the best he's ever seen in that whole time. So give a shout out to Scotty and I think Ryan was driving the blade. So good job, guys. Love to have that feedback. Very last thing, today, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics issued the cost of living adjustment for last year. We had the first half of last year, I believe it was 3.4% consumer price index increase. And then the second half of the year was higher, 6.35. So we're looking at an annual increase in 2021 of about 4.9%. It's a little bit higher than we've, we've had in recent years. Although going back, looks like 2008 was the next highest, it was at 4.6. So we're in the middle of the two-year budget process, but one of the things that we did tell you that we would come back with is a mid, a mid-biennium adjustment. And specifically, one of the things that we would intend to consider as part of that request is cost of living adjustment to the salary schedule, as well as potentially some other changes. But we just now got that data and between now and June, we will be reviewing it, taking a look at things and potentially coming back to the council closer to the start of the new fiscal year. And, and that COLA piece will be one piece of that. So I just wanted to share that, that data with you. And that concludes my report, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for the city manager? I do have one quick one. I know that Borough had put in four and we had supported it, I think it was a 32 or 33 million dollar grant for tree removal, fire protection, whatever. Have we heard anything on what the status of that is?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. You're correct that they had submitted that request to, to the federal delegation and we had supported it. We did ask that question and were not made aware of any forward progress. So at this point, we haven't heard any updates. I'm not necessarily expecting that request to move forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11 on the agenda, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one in the chambers and I see no hands raised on Zoom. So we'll move on to item 12 on the agenda, council comments. And we'll start out with student Representative Knowles.
Well, we have some exciting news, which is that we can, or the school board so far is allowing us to do prom, which wasn't even really a question last year. So it's really exciting that they're saying if things continue the way they have been continuing, then we should be allowed to do prom in the school. We've decided on the date of April 2nd. And there's going to be basketball games on Friday, as well as hockey games. And the graduation for the seniors this year will take place on the football field outside.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really many comments tonight. Just was excited to see in the news recently, the opening of the shelter out in the Nikiski area and recent report that it's already about half full. So that is just a huge lift and help to our community and just a huge thanks to all the people who worked hard to make that happen. There is a lot of unsung heroes and people that have been working very hard at that for many, many years. And I know this group has talked a lot about it in the past and I want to thank our city manager and city planner for really pushing hard on ways to help with that. And I think this is a, a huge accomplishment for our community and just exciting to see something happen in that regard. So that's all my comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sure like having meetings where we're all here together. I've got to tell you, it just, it enlivens me. It's just so much better. And I just think there's much better dialogue and better communication. I also want to say, and I like being an optimist, I think they're getting a handle on this COVID thing. Or at least the disease itself is getting a handle so that it sure sounds like we're going to move much more toward normalcy, much more toward this being one of the things that people deal with in their life, as they do with many other viruses, many other things. And that there'll be medication and remediations to help so that society can get back to where it needs to be. And so I feel really good and it's a wonderful time to be alive.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Vice Mayor Parker.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Chilson.
No comments tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nelson?
And the same, nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I guess I'll talk. Again, the homeless shelter is a great thing. It was wonderful that Siri and Rasmussen came together and funded that whole project. I can't tell you how many people I have spoken to that are so delighted that that's open. But the other thing, on kind of a sadder note, you know, Ed Rasmussen died in the last week or so and he was so instrumental in helping so many people and all over the state, but also on the peninsula. The homeless shelter was one. The Kenai Peninsula Community Care Center was another. The Boys and Girls Club, I mean, the list goes on and on. So we really lost a great guy. Thank you.
And just to add something to the homelessness issue, Project Homeless Connect will be having their annual event at the sports center on January the 26th. If anyone's interested in volunteering or helping out there, I believe it'll start at about 8:30 in the morning and go until three or four o'clock in the afternoon. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item number 13, the executive session. United Cook Inlet Drift Association and Cook Inlet Fisherman's Fund versus National Marine Fisheries Service and National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. City Attorney Brooks Chandler, AS 44.62.310C3, matters which by law, municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential. In accordance with this Alaska statute, attorney-client communications are matters which by law, municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential, therefore may be held in executive session. May have a motion to enter into executive session. Vice Mayor Parker?
Some move that we enter into an executive session to discuss the Cook Inlet Drift Association litigation?
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Seeing none. For those attending through Zoom, the Zoom meeting will end and will not be resumed after the executive session. There is no further business to be taken up after the executive session. However, after the executive session is over, the meeting will briefly resume at soldatna.org/streaming. Make that motion while we're in open session?
Sure.
Do we need a second for that?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chilson, thank you. Any objections of coming out of executive session? Seeing none, motion passes by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda is meeting announcements. January 17th, 2022's Library Advisory Board at 5:15 PM. January 26th, 2022 is a city council meeting here in the chambers at 6:00 PM. Having nothing more in front of us, meeting is now adjourned.